You can come on up too. But the enthusiasm, like was said, is just, you can see it. And it's meaningful because it's made a meaningful impact. So best of luck to you and thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to invite J.D. Hill to come up and join me. Unmanned aerial vehicles, commonly known as drones, is a thing that's becoming more prevalent around us. They're now more around for personal use. And as you all know, Sarasota County Schools is one of the first in the state of Florida to come up with a policy on UAVs. And we have four high schools currently this year that Booker High School, Northport High School, Venice High School, and Sarasota High School, working with the Unmanned Safety Institute, which is the world's leading provider of safety education and training with UAVs. These four schools have been working with them, working towards industry certifications that are on the CAPEES certification list. And I'm going to let J.D. explain some of what he has been up to.
Hello, everybody. My name is actually DJ. Sorry for the typo.
[laughter]
DJ Hill. I'm going to talk about the drone program at Booker High School. And honestly, at first, we had no clue this was coming. Nobody really told us about drones. We kind of came into class and our teacher, Ms. McCray, was like, hey, guys, look, drones. It was like, cool. And she sent us back there. And at first, we were just playing with the drones. And then she introduced us to all the certifications and stuff that we would have to get. And honestly, it's a bit much. It looks like a bit much, but she makes it all manageable and stuff for us. And what I wanted to share was a little story. When we were back there messing with the drones the first time, this is one of our Simone drones, Microdrones. We were back there messing with the skills course that's outside. And after we completed it, we was like, what do we do next? And Ms. McCray was like, you're engineers, go for it. And so I actually came up with the idea to land on a launch pad. This little button, you press this and then move it. And then the drone will do either a front flip or a back flip. I came up with the idea to hit a backflip and land perfectly. Don't move anything. And it was the most fun we've ever had, just trying to hit the backflip first of all and then land. I was the only one to do it, just...
Just for the record. [laughter]
Yeah, I've been in the engineering program for three years. I'm a junior at Booker High School. And drone program, we hope to get our safety certification. We were actually studying that in class today. It's supposed to be a one-year program, but we kind of compressed it. So we're trying to get our safety certification. And then next year, because my class is full of juniors, next year, we're going for our pilot's license. And they told us about all the job opportunities that come with that, aerial photography and videos and things of that nature.
That's incredible. I think we're fortunate to have offered, to be able to offer this in Sarasota because it is definitely on the front cutting edge. But, and it sounds incredibly exciting, so kudos to you. Do you know what your plans are? I know you're a junior, but it sounds that you have been inspired by this program.
Oh, yes, I've been inspired immensely. Coming into high school, I actually thought I wanted to be a marine biologist. But as soon as I joined engineering, I knew I wanted to be an electrical engineer. And I hope, once I become a senior, I get accepted into University of Miami to study electrical engineering.
Excellent. Best of luck. Best of luck. Thank you so much. Mrs. Goodwin.
Electrical engineering is a wonderful, a wonderful profession that can lead you in many directions. But I think they have a better program at the University of Florida than the University of Miami. So you might want to check that...
It's cheaper, too.
And it's cheaper. That's right. No, I'm teasing. You have a wonderful, a wonderful command of this technology. You know, you see on television now people serving cookies on a tray with their own grandparent commercial. I think that's really funny. But I mean, there's all kinds of applications that we'll have, including, you know, perhaps delivering packages with drones. But I just think that, I've seen several aeronautical students across on the East Coast that were doing, did some design and doing some work with drones. And I just think this is, this is the greatest thing. But electrical engineering is a really, really tough job, but it's really a great profession. So best of luck to you, and we'll look forward to seeing you. And next year, you're telling us, you know, where you're getting accepted, because I'm sure you're going to do great things, DJ. And I like DJ better than JD. I think that has a better ring.
Thank you. Okay. Suncoast Polytechnic High School has an animation, gaming, and simulation program. And I've invited some of the students from that program to talk about their senior capstone projects, internships, and benefits of that program. So if the SPHS students would please come up.
So these guys get to earn credit for playing games at school?
Well, yes. First things first, my name is Anakin Brooks. I'm a senior at Suncoast Polytechnic High School. I am currently working on a capstone along with most of the, most of the students behind me. What a capstone is, I click this to go, awesome. What a capstone is, is that it's basically a project that the seniors work on in their senior year, when they accumulate all of the knowledge and education that they have achieved through ninth grade all the way up to this point, to make, well, the project that is the spearhead of their, what's the word, portfolio. So right here, we have a speed painting or painting on Photoshop, the castle scene right up there. We have a character designed with a 3D model there, which is also, which is about another person's capstone. Next, I would like to bring up Eddie Smith, who will talk about the courses that can be done inside of capstone.
Hello, I'm Eddie Smith. And in capstones, we have three different fields in our class. We have gaming, art, and animation. Now, I'm in gaming because I like video games. And we have a group making a VR game, which is virtual reality. You put on these goggles, you got to be inside the world of the game. And that's pretty cool. We also have 2D games, which is like Mario or Zelda. I'm sure you guys have played that. I hope.
Atari.
Yes, Atari.
Pac-Man, Tron, heard of it?
There you go. And so we have two groups making different games that are like Mario or Zelda. And then we also have 3D games. Those are games like Halo or Skyrim. And to make 3D games, you have to make 3D models, like this gun in the bottom right. That was made in a 3D modeling software by Anakin, here. We also have art, which you make a portfolio of all your best art that you're making that year or even the years before. That takes a lot of work in the entire year. Then there's animation, which you have to make a 30-second animation in programs like Storyboard and Harmony. And that can either be done in 3D or 2D. So next, Jordan.
Hello, my name is Jordan Thompson, and I am the project manager for our internship program within AGS. My job is to guide the project forward and make sure that we meet deadlines, as well as produce documentation for the game. Our internship is focused on gamifying the classroom. Gamification is taking real-world application and applying it to a video game. By doing this, you improve, improve the productivity of the students via incentives, which the students can earn by turning in projects and getting experience within that system. One of the other opportunities I personally was able to have was redesigning our school's logo for Suncoast Polytechnic High School. And it's on my shirt. I don't believe we have it on the slides. But yeah, I would like to introduce Ben to further talk about the internship program.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the record, the logo that you replaced may be one of the worst school logos I've ever seen in my entire life.
Thank you. And so...
Thank you for acknowledging that.
I was not responsible for choosing renegade as your mascot. But as you talk to different students, people really don't know what a renegade is. Now, for us Florida State fans, it's a spotted horse. But for other folks, there were ninjas and bandits and, at one point in time, a palm tree wearing a bandana.
With actually a sail.
Yes.
Apparently.
So, thank you. Thank you. So if you'll just look this way, the new logo is the...
So the new logo is a robotic horse.
Outstanding.
Yeah, I don't...
Awesome.
Very cool.
Well done, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Ben McCabe. I'm a 3D modeler for the internship program. Most of what I do is taking two-dimensional drawings that people have made in the class, and I turn them into 3D objects in programs such as Audre's Maya. And then I can use those objects in game engines such as Unreal Engine, which allows students to interact with them in real time. And this allows me, this, even though I'm a junior, not a senior, and I'm not currently in the internship program, I will be going to internship program next year. And doing this allows me, as a student, to prepare myself better for next year's internship program. And next up is Alex.
All right. Hello, my name is Alexander, and I would like to tell you the benefits of the AGS program at SPHS. Some of the benefits, the students in the AGS program get the...
That's a nice logo.
Apologies for the interruption.
They get the opportunity to experience what the industry is like for both art, gaming, and some graphic design, like branding and all that. And they will be able to get certified in many mainstream products, such as Adobe products and Microsoft products, along with animation projec, ah, animation products such as TuneBoom, Harmony, and Storyboard. Students will also have access to utilize new technology and equipment that they would have nowhere else, like have the opportunity to use it anywhere else. And students will be able to participate in indie groups to get more experience and be able to learn how to ship and learn how a game is made and be able to, like, produce the game. And also, what's it called, like, show off, like, merchandise for it, if needed to be. And along with all these benefits, the program has many networking opportunities in which we partner up with companies like Microsoft and UTC Mall, which we get to go into in May. And we get to show off the work that we did for these companies or for, like, in our classroom.
Mr. Robinson?
You intrigued me, Anakin. You had mentioned that, that you guys have 3D Halo? I mean, is it virtual reality Halo that you guys are playing?
We are not rebuilding Bungie's beautiful creation of Halo, no. We are taking...
Now, Microsoft is taking it over, but yeah.
It is a Microsoft product.
Yeah.
What we are doing is that we are taking our own designs for games and/or animations and creating them into our own projects. The picture that you saw before...
With the gun.
The gun there in the door. I have taken creations that I have created back in 10th grade and 9th grade.
Kind of looks like the needle gun.
Oh, Halo gun?
Yeah, the Halo needle gun.
I'm shooting lasers. And I am turning what you see there into a full-fledged game that is made by my lonesome inside of the Unreal Engine. I'm taking models that I, sorry, I'm taking drawings that I create on paper and turning them into full-fledged 3D models inside of Maya, which I then bring into Unreal to give them animations and make them usable by the player.
So you're kind of like the Cortana of the game?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if there are any additional questions, Mr. Robinson. Are you good?
I have teenage boys, so we do play Halo.
I just wanted to add, I think, again, this is tremendous access and exposure to, especially, I know it was mentioned, virtual reality is, in all different industries, becoming an industry disruptor, if you will. So you, as, from a marketable standpoint and having that knowledge and understanding that is such a huge asset. So again, this is very encouraging to hear this and see. And plus, it's fun. It's a great fun, I mean, it's a fun way to learn, so, but very meaningful.
Whoever started at the beginning saying, do we play games in the classroom? We actually do. We play the games we create. We also hold days known as game days where we play...
For research.
Yes, Jordan, for research. We hold these, we hold these game days so that we may play games that say we are working on, like, say Halo, for instance. And we take ideas and we get brainstorms from these games that we play so that we made better our work.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Of cour, I thought that the Jane, but no, yeah. So what are your plans? So everyone's a junior or is a mixed senior? You're a senior.
I'm a senior.
Anakin is future.
I like that name. I'm a junior and Ben is a junior as well, and these three are seniors.
Yes, we are all seniors.
I'm a senior.
Alrighty, I'm one of them.
So what are your plans after you graduate?
After I graduate, I will be going to Full Sail University in Orlando. I'm already accepted. I'm already on their roster. They really want me bad because of my work that they've seen.
Absolutely, wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Eddie.
I plan on taking certificate courses in programming and business so I can go off from there and be, do what I want to do.
Very good.
I personally am going to University of Central Florida. I've been accepted to their fall semester.
Congratulations.
And I'm planning on going into the computer sciences program.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
I haven't selected an exact college yet, but I have three in mind, the California College of Arts, because it has so many accessibility for me to learn even more, Ringling College of Arts here, and Full Sail in Orlando. Those are the three colleges I'm thinking about or looking at to participate in.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Just like Alex, I haven't chosen a specific college yet, but I am looking into multiple different ones that will allow me to, once I complete high school, further my 3D modeling career and eventually use that as a job.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
I just know that whatever college you choose, like you said, they may be coming to you, which is amazing, because I know there's some people thinking, well, I just can't get to college, my, I don't have the money, my family doesn't have the money. But when you come with the kind of background that you have, it probably isn't going to cost quite as much. And I can't imagine that some of you aren't going to hit the big time soon. And so get some business courses behind you so you learn how to invest those monies you make when you sell those, those new designs. And like we said, we had some from digital art that went on to Ringling College, and then they went on to, you know, DreamWorks, was it? And they won Academy Awards, you know? Just, that's right around the corner for you all. Amazing. And, and you're having fun doing it. It's, it's, it's great. And I'm glad we're able to offer that. But I know that it's, it's a career that, that can pay great dividends for you all. And I'm glad we're able to provide it for you. Thank you.
And I just want to close on the note that, I want to note that what a tremendous asset the University of Florida's partnership of College of Engineering is. So again, we're very fortunate to have that. I know, I'm, my husband may be upset that I'm talking about UF, but no, it's tremendous, tremendous asset here, and we're very, very fortunate to have that. So thank you again for sharing your stories.
Thank you very much for having us.
I want to take a quick moment and expand on what Jordan was talking about with the gamification. I don't know that you fully understand what he was trying to explain. They are currently designing a game that is tied to the curriculum of one of their courses. So future students that are in that program will play this game and work through the curriculum of the course. That's insane. Yeah.
Now, that's something they could probably sell. Put it up there, and this is something we can offer, you know, to some of our other schools even. I mean, I know those, those textbooks get a lot of money, and I can't imagine a program to get it done wouldn't bring it in, too.
Very good. All right, finally, I have some parting words for you from Northport High School's animatronics robot, who will be competing at the TSA National Event this June. His name's Trevor.
Wow.
Hello, Trevor. So this is Trevor. Me and Carson worked on this for an event called Technology Student Association. So this is our animatron that we use to compete in the event.
Does it just blink?
Hi, my name is Trevor from Northport High School, and I am a zookeeper for TSA. On behalf of my teachers, students, and animatronic colleagues, thank you so much for your support of our CTE programs, including my favorite class, engineering technology. I am the product of the ideas, skills, and experience of my students who are your students, too. You are giving us the resources we need to explore our college and career opportunities and preparing us for success. Special thanks to my friends, Frank and Carson, for creating me. We are ready for what the future brings.
That was incredible. Questions? Mrs. Goodwin?
I bonded with him instantly. He's so cute. He's so cute. Gee, you all have done a great job with this.
Thank you.
I mean, you, you could take him on the road, you know? This is the new thing. It's really, it's really just amazing, but how long did it take you to produce this?
Couple months. Two or three months.
Two or three months?
Months.
Are both of you seniors?
No, we're both juniors.
Both juniors.
It's incredible that, Dr. Boden?
Fabulous.
So am I correct to identify that, are parts of Trevor 3D printed?
Yeah, the head's completely 3D printed.
That's incredible.
Comes off, too.
Trevor's lost his head.
Poor Trevor.
Can't even blink.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so we used part of the school's engineering program to help, like, fund for this and design this. Yeah, so we used, like, the school's printer to print the head and design it, too. And also, we had to, yeah, we had to do all the wiring and learn about the...
Thank you and good night.
Sorry about that. Yeah, the engineering program is, like, great for us to, like, explore and, you know, just experiment with, like, all different types of computery, wiring, and just, like, mechanical parts, yeah.
Mr. Robinson? Oh, no, excuse me. Never mind.
I wonder when Skynet's coming online.
Trevor's good. I think that's remarkable. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think that people would think high school students were creating anything near this caliber. It's amazing, so.
Amazing.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for bringing Trevor to, to our presentation.
Before I let all these students go home, do you have any comments in general for them?
We're amazed.
It's rare that you find this board speechless, I will tell you. But no, really, I think it's, there's just so much here, and I think that it's so, there's, if you think a couple years back, the stigma from CTE and how much work and focus and proactive nature has been around that. And I see with the students showing these amazing, amazing projects, I hope that you are enjoying it as much as we are, to be able to see that this is something that's a very, very big success. So best of luck, and thank you so much for all the hard work. I really appreciate it.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Bye, Trevor. I believe that concludes our special presentations this evening. Moving on to the superintendent's report, however, if you want to take a moment just for some photos and then resume.
I will have to speak to Mr. Jennings about scheduling me right after Trevor.
Okay.
He's a tough act to follow. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates. Yesterday, on the 2nd of April, our off-duty officers reported to the 21 elementary school sites in the district who were previously without a school resource officer. Do want to remind you that we previously had school resource officers at Emma E. Booker and Venice Elementary School. At the conclusion of our meeting on March 22nd, the board authorized staff to enter into agreements with the Sarasota County Sheriff's Office, the Sarasota Police Department, and Northport Police Department to provide off-duty coverage from Monday, April 2nd, through the end of the year. The total cost of those agreements will be $300,982. Tomorrow, you'll get an email from me that breaks it down by each municipality. I want to talk just very briefly, just to set the stage for our April 17th Board Workshop. In that workshop, we will talk about the impacts of the expansion of our school resource officers as dated by the School Public Safety Act. To put that in reference, here in the 2017-18 school year, our current school resource officer program is budgeted just shy of $1.5 million. And our Safe Schools allocation from the state is approximately $800,000. So currently, in the 2017-18 school year, we run at a deficit of $643,000 for just our school resource officers. That does not contemplate the costs associated with our internal Department of School Safety and Security. The addition of the off-duty officers at a cost of $300,000 takes that projected shortfall in the school safety program to $944,000 in the year 2017-2018. We have done some cost modeling, and I will preface this, that the cost modeling is worst-case scenario, which really provides us an outer boundary as we look at the possible implications on our general fund for the 18-19 school year. But for our current SRO program, without adding the first officer, if we were required by each municipality to bear the full cost of that program, the cost of that program would go from $1.4 million to just shy of $2.7 million. The full cost of expanding that program on a permanent basis into each of our elementary school sites would be an additional $2.4 million for a total cost of $5.1 million. We did receive an increase in funding on the Safe Schools allocation. It comes to us in two parts. Previously, I told you, we received $815,000. I'll label that, our Safe Schools categorical for our existing. That is, has been increased to just shy of $950,000. We've been provided additional funding to expand the program, and after allocating their proportionate share to charter schools, the district will retain $1,920,000. And so our funding from Safe Schools categorical for the district next year is $2,410,000. I believe there is some misinformation in the community that we've received additional funds that allows us to cause, fully cover the cost of the expansion of these programs. The funding available to us out of the Safe Schools categorical for next year is $2,410,000. When you offset that by the cost of accepting full responsibility for both our existing SRO program and the expansion of that program at $5.1 million, our shortfall will be just shy of $3.1 million. And so we've gone from a shortfall of $643,000 increase to 944 by putting off-duty officers in for the remainder of the year. And that deficit will expand to just shy of $3.1 million. The actual number is $3,098,898. And I know you all are taking copious notes. I will forward this to you so that you have it before I go home for the evening. But just wanted you to have those numbers. And so if you look at our current budget as presented to you on March 22nd, we did contemplate a shortfall... look at our current budget as presented to you on March 22nd, we did contemplate a shortfall of $650,000. And so, when you take that versus a worst-case scenario of $3.1 million, that leaves us at about a $2.5 million deficit if you look at the budget that was presented to you on March 22nd. So, staff is currently reviewing our budgets. That includes all cost centers, to include those central office and school-level budgets. We provided cost-reduction targets to each cost center. We're using a benchmark of 1%, which will allow us to generate a potential cut list of in excess of $4 million that will allow us to workshop and see if we wish to, how we wish to go about filling a $2.5 million hole in our operating budget. And so, we have made the decision to allow the staffing process to continue while we go through this exercise. But based on the feedback that we get from you on the 17th of April, we may have to alter the staffing timeline, but at this point in time, we have not interrupted that process. Schools are looking at the budgets as presented, going through staffing, while at the same time contemplating cuts that may be applied to their budgets. And so, we're looking forward for them to providing that feedback. We'll receive that here at the district office. I know it's a short turnaround, but it's my anticipation to have those budget, potential budget reductions for you to contemplate by a week from Friday, so that you have them over the weekend as you prepare for the April 17th Board Meeting. I will pause there to answer any questions that you have, and I will get these exact numbers into your hands before...
Mr. Robinson?
I think that, that there's more to this than this shortfall. First of all, our deficit was going down from 9.5% to 7.5% this year, so we already needed to have cuts before this, I just want to point that out. Second thing is, is I understand this is a worst-case scenario, but not only this worst-case scenario, this is the scenario we're at now. And I think we can understand how we got to this scenario, so we can understand what the issue is, so we can figure out how to solve it. If we don't understand what the problem is, then it's harder to figure out how to solve it. And I think that, you know, one of the problems, just say it, is our relationship with the cities and the counties, and specifically the sheriff. I mean, I got an extremely irate, upset phone call from the sheriff today, that he was very upset. And if you go back to, I won't go back very far, but we'll go back to the beginning of the year, when we had convocation, you and I discussed this in private, we had convocation, we had all, I don't know if people know what convocation is, but it's basically all the city commissioners, all the county commissioners, all the city managers, all the county managers come to the school district. We host a meeting with everybody in the room to exchange ideas and talk. And one of the issues came up was, you know, I'll give you an example, is Northport came up and talked about pools and how to do cost-sharing. City of Sarasota came up and talked about Closing School Avenue, which is something we should have, we could have been farther along the process if we started running with it then, but we didn't because Todd Boden decided, Dr. Boden decided not to show up to convocation. City manager from Long Bow Key showed up at the convocation. Then, the tragic events of Parkland happened. And then the entire week, we had, what, 25, 28 threats occurred, and you were in Pinellas and you didn't come back. We, it got so hectic that 500 kids didn't show up for Sarasota Middle, and you still didn't come back. Our executive director for middle schools abruptly resigned, and you still didn't come back. I mean, and this is sending messages to the various cities and counties and municipalities that we want to go at this alone. That's the message that they're getting. I've talked to, to a lot of city commissioners, I have good relationships with a lot of county managers, county commissioners, city managers, and the sheriff. And so, when you, when we send the message that we want to go out alone, whether intentionally or unintentionally, they pick up upon those messages, and they act accordingly. And so, I get a phone call from the sheriff today, coming up to where we're at today, but he's upset about how our interaction. This isn't the first time that he has voiced his displeasure, and the sheriff says to me that we're violating the contract, that he has an agreement with us. And he says to me, the sheriff does, "If you violate my contract and we void the contract, what's the school district going to do then? You think we're in a bad place now? Think about where we're going to, where we're going to be then." And the sheriff, he has worked hard. You know what would be a doomsday scenario, the worst-case scenario? Is if we had to do, pay for all these deputies at $104,000. The sheriff worked on his own, and the sheriff has been on record saying that he's, he's only being able to communicate with us in writing now. He's told me that he's never had to communicate like this with letters, not being able to call up and have informal, informal talks and communications. But he has to memorialize everything down in writing. That is not the relationship that we need to have with the sheriff. We need to, we need to sit down and have relationships. Now, I'll give you another example. The very first time we had COGS after Parkland, which is a council of governments, it's like, it's like many convocations, which is just the chairman of the board, I know Jane went to the, went to the one that I'm referencing, and all the city managers go to it. And this one, actually, the first one after Parkland happened to be hosted, it goes around to different, different locations. And this one, right after Parkland, happened to be hosted by the school district. And it happened to also be the same day as Tiger Bay while I was on the panel. And I walk into Tiger Bay, and Dr. Boden, you were there. And remember what I said to you, the first thing I said to you when I saw you, I was like, "Why are you here? Why aren't you at COGS?" You could have been around that table, talking to those city managers, talking to those county, talking to the county manager, talking to the chair of the county commission, discussing with them, explaining to them these issues, so they wouldn't have the misconception that we had the funding. Communication and understanding is how you stop the miscommunication. We need to build upon this relationship and identify the problem. The problem isn't simply that we're a shortfall in financials, the problem is that we have a relationship problem with these other municipalities. In the past, Ms. Brown said it perfectly at the workshop, in the past, we've always enjoyed such a great relationship, we've always had funding. And the fact that not only not going to help us with additional funding for elementary schools, but the fact that they're pulling out the funding altogether for everything is just mind-boggling. And so, it shouldn't, we shouldn't just concentrate on trying to how to cut the budget and how to fix the budget, because these decisions have real-world consequences. Now, I'm only one board member, and you and I've had discussions, and you and I obviously don't agree with this, and, but, but when you, when you make these decisions, they have consequences. And these consequences are going to result in millions of dollars being cut from the budget, and 85% of our budget is salaries, so that's going to mean that there are going to be people and their families that may end up losing their jobs because of this. Their lives are going to be turned upside down. And everything I've said here is a matter of public record. There, all those meetings are public meetings, all those meetings are public notice, the attendees are public, nothing I said is, is not, not something that somebody can easily go and find out from public records.
Are you, are you not in possession of an email that Ms. Ziegler sent to me on March 7th?
An email that Ms. Ziegler sent you on March 7th? I get, I get so many emails, I don't...
No, we're not.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, well, you've read exactly from that email, so I can't help but think that this is coordinated in some way. At the same time...
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Hold on, excuse me, hold on one second.
While you launched a 12-minute personal attack, I would like the opportunity to respond. You have laid this firmly at my feet, but yet you bear no responsibility? You have these great relationships with each municipality, but do you advocate for schools? I don't believe that you do. Matter of fact, I believe that you agitate. I believe that you are driving wedges between us and these other entities. I provided to you an attachment today. It details my interactions with the sheriff. My interactions with the sheriff are not limited to writing. That's the public narrative. I've had multiple phone calls with the sheriff, explained multiple text messages. There is an open line of communication between the sheriff and I. And the fact that we face a 2.5 million budget shortfall doesn't fall at my feet, and I won't accept that. Each and every meeting that you've mentioned, I made a decision that that's where I needed to be. That's my role as superintendent. If you'd like, we can go through each and every one of them, starting with Council of Governments, in which I was in Tallahassee as part of the Florida Association of District School Superintendents. That meeting was on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I offered to our board chair to return on Thursday evening. Her advice to me was to stay in Tallahassee and to continue and advocate for the summer reading allocation. The Council of Governments meeting that you referenced, which was chaired by Ms. Goodwin, I called her in advance and said, "Do you need me at the Council of Governments meeting?" And she said, "I'm good with Scott." Each and every one of those, I can provide you phone records at which I was so-called out of town and unavailable, in which not only did I attend a full day of training, but I made hours upon hours upon hours of phone calls at the end of the day. The idea that we have poor relationships is a narrative that you have fueled. You claim to have great relationships with every municipality. I'd like for you to tell me what the positive benefits to this school district is. Have you picked up the phone and called the sheriff? And said that shifting $750,000 in cost from our existing program will cost us, as you said, to lose staff? You are quite the advocate for his positions. I just wonder if you advocate for the positions of our district. And I will not be attacked by you. I have gotten between you and members of my staff on multiple occasions at which you said, "If you disagree with me, I will crush you in public," and yes, that's a quote. It is. So, do we all have a role in this? Yes. But you're not going to drop this at my feet. No, sir.
Mrs. Brown?
I, for one, am sorry we've devolved to this. I know that I was concerned at our workshop. I was concerned about the week before our workshop when I was receiving frantic emails from the sheriff, and hearing that the sheriff was insisting it was his responsibility to put officers on our campuses, and if we weren't going to do it, he was going to do it and send us the bill, I believe is what it was said. And I'm like, "Wait a minute, this doesn't sound right." I mean, A, why would they expect us to put sheriffs on all of our, our school sites when the funding doesn't even start until next year? I sent calls and emails up to FSBA, to our lobbyists, to find out what the legislative intent is, because apparently it was not clear in the letter or in the law when, when it became, when it was expected of us to do this. I received from our lobbyists and from FSBA that the intent was, and that it was discussed in discussion, because I know that the law says one thing, but to clarify things, people ask questions, and it was brought up in the questions. And the funding was for the following school year, not currently. We received a letter, I believe you all received it too. I know that when I received it, I shared it with you and pointed out, I even pointed out where it was, it was the second bullet, the bottom bullet point on the governor's letter to us, that they expected us to use this time for planning. The legislature nor the governor expected us to have a plan in place within, you know, a week of that bill being signed. And I felt it was wrong to be pushed to a decision that quickly. I was actually surprised that we even had a budget out there, and that we even had a, a plan at all brought to us at that workshop. As it is, and I think I brought up my surprise at that workshop, that I was surprised that our partners in this, who have been partners for years, would want to pull out at a time when safety is at a higher concern than ever before, that our partners in this would want to pull back. And apparently, they misunderstood, or didn't get the right information, that we were fully funded, that we're just floating in money. And, and I've heard comments that have been made, and I'm not going to go into he said, she said kinds of things. I mean, we don't have enough money. And I think that we need to take a step back and use this time for planning, because it is not the way that all the other districts are going, where the sheriffs are pulling back on their support of the school districts. And it is not happening in all of the districts that they're even doing. I mean, there are some districts that have their own police forces. I think we need to look at, you know, we were given a letter, and we were, we were told, I believe it was, "Take it or leave it," is what I was heard. We were told we had to do that day. I say, "Leave it," because I don't think we should be making a decision of this importance that quickly. We haven't even heard from our community yet how they feel about it. I mean, I think we need to take a breath, sit back, and look at other ways we need to solve this problem, because it is not, I believe, the sole responsibility. I mean, the taxpayers give us the money to educate the kids. That's what we need to do. The tax money gives the money to, to the county and the sheriff and the police departments to keep us safe. If we can't find a partnership in that, well, then we need to look at another way of doing it, because I do not feel that it's right for us to send money to the sheriff, for him to hire the people that are going to come over to our, our school districts, and our school districts are going to have these people that they sent over. We're not the ones that are going to be the bosses of them. I, I think we need to take a breath, we ought to look back, and we got to see what other districts are doing right now, and not come up with a plan, because there is no rush to this. And we've made an agreement, we went along with the sheriff and put somebody at all of our schools. I, I, you know, we've already agreed to that. There's $350,000 that are coming out of our education budget to satisfy what the sheriff wants to do. We're doing it. But I think before we go on for next year and what we're going to do, I think we need to look at what other districts are doing and look for a Plan C. And fighting amongst ourselves is not a way to solve it. This is too much an important issue to be slinging things back and forth at each other, because that doesn't put us in a position to, to fire a superintendent and get a new one, because there won't be a superintendent worth his weight to come in here that would want to come in and supervise a board that will be attacking him in public.
I'd want to address a couple different things. And, and quite frankly, I think, Mrs. Brown, you put on a great, a lot of great points. I think, so let me take a couple steps back. I do think everyone needs to take a breath. I think this is far too important of an, of an issue for us to not go in with a clear head, because I do believe that the community expects this for us to work out, and we will. However, there are elements that I do believe brought us to this place, and it would be wonderful if, whether you take some or part of responsibility, and I don't want to hash that out right now, but I think that's important. I, yes, privately, did send you a message before, as I saw these things coming, as I had concerns. And I was disappointed at the continued action, but I provided it to you in the element of, for purpose of reflection and for perspective. I know that within my conversations, as things have transformed forward, that I did share, when it came down to the letter and the miscommunication from, that the sheriff had expressed, that I did share, that I had also shared a letter with you. And the reason is, because I think it's important, one, it was private and intended to reference for perspective, where I thought was putting us in a path that had, would have implications. Would it devastate our partnerships? No. But does it send a message, potentially? And when you're hearing that, and this is not, this is just people bring that forward to you, it's a concern. It's a concern, it's a valid concern. Does it mean that you, we want, that I want to micromanage a superintendent? Absolutely not, because what Mrs. Brown just said is that would have a tremendous implication on whoever we would have to fill that seat. I want whoever fills that seat to be successful, because the implications are far too important to this county to not allow that person to be successful. But in order for this all to work, there has to be an element of, well, there's got to be trust, there's got to be forthcoming with information. I would be remiss, well, let me go back. I really appreciate you coming forward with additional information. And as we discussed, as we've moved up through this timeline, providing us with some... And as we discussed, as we've moved up through this timeline, providing us with some options so we don't feel like we're boxed in, so we can visually look at all of it. And it, yes, it's been fluid. We're moving fast. And I am incredibly impressed with the work that this staff has done around the clock. And I've said it again and again and again, because I know that everyone here is committed to seeing us find a solution and let it be reminded that we are funded by taxpayers who expect us to figure this out, as is the county commission, as is the city's, so we can find a solution to this. But where we find ourselves today, I would be, I think you would be prudent to own some level of responsibility, because when you were putting out some numbers here, which is very detailed numbers, and I appreciate it, you have something in front of you. Why would that not be provided to us? And I understand it's a worst-case scenario, which I appreciate, that's a range to kind of prepare us on what we may be looking at in the future, no different than what we kind of do when it comes to budget standpoint. We don't necessarily know every year what the legislature will fund, but it's a range. And it allows us to be prepared, and it avoids these kind of contentious conversations. So I am disappointed that we are here, and I don't think it's strong leadership to a degree when you can't own and reflect on something if it bears some element of responsibility. I don't like the finger pointing, because I think that hurts us in all elements. That does no one any good. But it would have been nice, and I brought this up at the last meeting, about financial options or various security options beyond just the SROs that were formerly known, but now we have the SRD-1 and SRD-2, but that we, as a board, could come together and talk it out, so we don't have this divisiveness and political theater, quite frankly. I was, and I shared this with you verbally, so nothing I'm telling you right now is a surprise, to be fair. But I also was disappointed in what I perceived to be a certain approach, and I may not be accurate, it was my perception, that information was not fully provided to the entire board for last workshop to be as productive as it could have been. And that's, and to go about, and I believe that we had that conversation before our board meeting that night, after you were aware of the sheriff potentially pulling the full cost sharing of the middle and high schools. So I went back and rewatched that meeting, because I could tell everyone, I'm sure people could tell, I was pretty frustrated. And I wanted to hear what was said. And I watched us for 30-some minutes, try to figure out the board, just try to figure out what we were even talking about. And that's, that puts us back, and we don't need to be doing that. So if you are able to provide us, and I appreciate it, if you're trying to, I mean, if you want to bring us back on track, I appreciate you sharing the communication trail with the sheriff, but I would much rather have had that printout that you just listed out than this.
For the record.
Go ahead.
For the record.
Yes.
On the 21st of March at 1:30, I received information. Your position is, I should have had options presented to the board at 8:30 the following morning. I just want to make sure that that is on record. Furthermore, you state that the spreadsheet that I just referred to, you should have received in advance. That spreadsheet was completed at about 6 o'clock today. Your criticism is that we're not moving fast enough. Your criticism is that I'm not showing strong leadership. I believe if you talked to my staff, they would feel otherwise. We are in a sprint, and it would be nice if there was some appreciation for the effort that's being put forth. You will have that spreadsheet before I go home this evening. But what cannot happen is you cannot have a board member who works behind the scenes to create chaos and then to turn around and say, "There's chaos. What are you going to do about it, Mr. Superintendent?" That's not fair.
Mr. Robinson, and then Mrs. Goodwin.
Everything that I mentioned was a matter of public record, so when you, your attacks on me are not. So let's get to the fact. When we talk about the Summer Learning Academy, because this is, this is something that you know to be true, is the Senate sponsor and the House sponsor, both, I showed both of them the Eagle Academy. When Julio Gonzalez talked at Tiger Bay the other day, specifically referenced the fact of my lobbying to help him get it passed. When it was in danger, you called me and asked me to help, and I did, and you know that I did. After the last meeting, I came to you, I don't know if you're going to admit to it now, I came to you and said, "I talked to Kathy Passadomo, Senator Passadomo, the chairman of the Senate Education Appropriations Committee, said that I got an appointment for you and I to drive down and meet with her to talk to us about our issues." Those are concrete examples that you know firsthand. I don't know if you're going to admit to them or not. You know firsthand, so that you know what you're saying isn't true. And I'll offer up to you now in public, which I've offered to you in private, I will go with you to meet with the sheriff. I will go with you to meet with any county commissioner that you want to. I'm offering this in public, so you can't say later on in private that those offers weren't made. If you want to go meet with somebody and talk to them, I can do that. These, throw in these accusations of saying people are behind the scenes, it's just not, it's just not fair, because you can't prove a negative, because what you're saying is entirely inaccurate. But all those events that I just told you about, helping out with Julio, Kathy Passadomo, and Greg Stube, are things that you actually know to be true.
So...
Wait, wait, wait. Do you actually know those things to be true?
I beg your pardon.
I believe they are partial truths. I wish you would finish what you said. You offered to go with me to Senator Passadomo.
Yes.
When I asked you if you would take a strong position when you arrived there, what was your response?
Pardon me, if I may.
You don't want to risk...
Dr. Bowden.
No, sir, I'm not.
Do I need to take a recess? Do we need to take a minute? Then show me that we can't, we don't need that. Mrs. Goodwin.
I can finish my words, if you want. He asked me a question.
Mr. Robinson, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Goodwin.
Okay, back to safety and security. We want our students to be safe and secure. That's the most important thing to us. But when I look at this county, you know, this county is made up of policing entities. We have the wonderful Northport Police, who are in transition right now with a new chief coming in and some short, short staff. We have the City of Venice, we have the City of Sarasota, and we have the sheriff. We have a sheriff deputy standing right over here that I dearly love, and I think that every one of our SROs and every time that we have any interaction at all with sheriffs, I just feel a level of calm come over me, because I really think they do such a great job for us and for our schools. And I think that's important. But the first time that I understood that we were not going to have our existing SROs 50/50 with the Sheriff's Department was the day before our workshop and board meeting. It surprised me greatly, because in talking to other counties around here, I don't know one of them that the sheriff has pulled out on that. And that is Pinellas and Manatee and Lee and Charlotte and Glade and a couple of other counties down south. They're all standing firm with their sheriff. And I really, really find that that gives me pause, because that's 3/4 of a million dollars of our existing SROs that we have today that are going to cost us a lot more money. And so that gives me great pause. We do not have the money, the $3 million shortfall that we are projecting for next year, and we need to do something about that. So I think that we need to go back to the drawing board, we need to sit down and look at the particular money that we need for coming up with a plan, and look at it, and look at things such as, you know, doing our own policing perhaps, our own force. They're doing, we had Larry Leon on our staff for a number of years, who was a police officer, and he's now back in Palm Beach County. So I think we need to look at all avenues, and I think that that would be the time to do it, would be at our next board meeting and our next workshop, and really look at what our options are. Because we do have great partners in law enforcement, and I think that we need to keep it at the board level and hopefully work through these issues and work through these conflicts or misunderstandings, whatever they may be. But I was shocked last week to read in the paper, and I did not interview for comment, the school district was closed, Tracy was hopefully having a little rest, Dr. Bowden was out of country. And I, and I saw a lot of things in the paper that I didn't know anything about, and gave me great pause and great surprise. So I think it's time for us now, we're all back here, we're all raring to go, and I think it's time for us to do what we need to do, which is to take care of our security, of our schools, and our students. And we need to really make some decisions and look at our options.
Mrs. Zucker.
I agree with Jane. That's what we're here to do. We're here to set policy. We are not here to micromanage. And whether you like it or not, that's what's being done. And I am aghast when I speak to staff and I find out how people are going around and bullying staff. It's wrong. And what Dr. Bowden just said is true. It is wrong. We do not have the right to tell staff what to do. We set policy, and that's it. I would like us to be able to draw from a list of various opportunities that we could look at and review as to where we want to go with safety and security. But Mrs. Brown is correct. We were not forced to do this right now. We were forced to do it in the 1819 school year. So to put all this pressure on the board and the superintendent and the whole system when it's not required right now, I think was ridiculous, because we tried to do the best thing to try and protect our students, but in the long run, we didn't. We, not that we didn't protect our students, we protected our students, but we shortcut ourselves and our budget in trying to do that, because we did not have a plan and we rushed forward. I do not want us to move forward. I do not want us to go any faster than we are until we know exactly what it is we want to do. And I would like us to look at having our own police force, because the money that it's going to cost us to hire or to contract with the various municipalities and the sheriff's office could possibly be less if we have our own school force, and we would have control over them. They would report to us, and it would be different than us paying a bill and reporting to somebody else. I'd rather pay a bill and have them report to me or to our superintendent, because they don't report to the board, they report to the superintendent. And I know that there is stuff going on in this community, that people are going behind people's back and talking, because I've been here and doing this for 20 years. So I have a lot of friends and a lot of people talk to me. And as a result, I know what's happening in this community. So unless everybody wants to close their mouth and get down to business, I say we all shut our mouths and learn how to work with the superintendent. And if we can't, then sit it out or get off the board.
Mrs. Brown.
I would like to, and I believe there was an email that I had sent out after getting some of this information. I had suggested that we get, that you get from staff, a list of all of the costs involved, you know, that we have for safety and security. It goes beyond just having school resource officers or police officers. We've got security officers, some of the glass that we're going to be installing and some of the other, the fencing and all of this, the cameras we have installed. There's a lot more than just these officers that already, we are spending some of our dollars. I believe we're using probably close to $1 million of our referendum dollars on some of the security. So I'd like to know how much we're spending now and where those dollars are coming from, and then how much these different proposals are going to cost us. But I think we need to know, like you said, we've got some of these, you've told us some of these numbers that are coming down from the state, but I know that we've had to already put in some of those dollars, because it's not enough to cover what we use, currently use for safety and security. So I think we need to get the total picture of what we spend on, if in fact it's something we can do in public. I mean, I know some of these meetings were done, you know, behind closed doors, but what our whole picture looks like for safety and security, because it's not just those officers. And then, and compare that to what we're, what we have coming in and where we fund those things from. And if we, and if we can, or if it's something that we could do, is invite some of them, law enforcement, in to sit down and talk about it, or at least whether we should be there, we should all be there. I don't know whether we can do that, put a time together, but so that they would at least look at and see the numbers, so they'll, they'll get the right answers, too.
I want to make one thing clear, that I think a lot of things even said tonight are just disappointing, and I am losing confidence, and it's because I don't feel that even statements made today, I questioned the accuracy. And maybe we need to have a more detailed line-out where I can understand certain things, but I'm concerned with that, because if we're going to find solutions for all of us, we need to know what the facts are and not be, and not have it twisted. And I, so I am concerned, and I just, and the implications are too important. So my hope is that we can work together and that games aren't being played, because I was very disappointed on the 22nd for my fellow board members, because I did not think that was fair. And I made that very clear. Mrs. Goodwin just mentioned she knew the day before. I appreciate you reaching out to me. I did ask you if you spoke to each board member. I know, and I know you weren't, I don't, I know you weren't, you did not, for whatever reason, not stating anything there, not saying, but it just, I know that you had confirmed that not every single board member you had the opportunity to reach out to on Monday, the 21st, prior to the 22nd meeting. Is that accurate?
It was a Wednesday.
I'm sorry. I keep doing that. It's just because we always have board meetings on Tuesdays. I apologize. Wednesday, the 21st, is what I referenced, for the Thursday meeting. That's correct. Now, I just, no, I just want to be clear on something, because I want to have, if I, we all have to have confidence in one another. I mean, there's a lot of statements that were just set up here, but I don't want...
We've had this ongoing dialogue of, "Why is it that we keep receiving new information?" Tonight, you received new information. On the 22nd, you received new information. Why do we gather here in public if it's not for me to give you information? So, yes, there was new information presented on March 22nd that I received on March 21st. So, yes, on March 22nd, I presented new information to the board, but I believe that's why we gather in the public, to have these meetings. And the idea that I should provide everything in advance, then why do we gather?
I believe, in general, the best way to make a successful board is that we all have as much information in the reasonable fashion at the same time, so that we can make educated decisions and solutions forward, in general. I try to remain consistent with sharing any information I receive, whether anyone cares to receive it or not, so we all have the same information at the same time, so we can make the best decisions we can. And I was concerned with the way it was handled, and I thought it looked like it was done on purpose. I've already made that clear. And I am willing to move forward, but I want it to be on the record that I have grave concerns in the ability to move forward, or to be able to be successful if we can't trust one another and make sure that we are being armed with the information to be as productive as possible, to make the solutions that are in the best interest for our students, staff, and this community. I know Mr. Robinson has his marker on, and I will, I'm done with that.
I just wanted to say that when we, I want to say a couple of things, but I just want to address something you just said. We get, we read aheads ahead of time so we can be informed, so we can make informed decisions, and that's how we always get packets ahead of time, so we can read and digest what it is that we're doing. And I agree with Mrs. Zucker, they're a policy entity, but that means that you have to take responsibility for the decisions that you make. You can't say that we're a policy entity and then you don't want to make this, take responsibility for the things that you make. And I would love to hear if you have any county commissioners ever said that I went, I went and put a wedge. If somehow or another I caused you not to go to those meetings, that I did any of those things, that would be totally news to me. But again, I'm offering you right here, right now, and I'd like to know from you, you know, you get new information right here at the board? I want to know, when can you come to my office and we can figure out a time where we can meet with the county commissioners, meet with the sheriff, we'll go together? Do you have, we have to make decisions right here on the board? I'd like to know if you can make a decision right here on the board. When can you come to my office that you and I could sit down together? When can you come to my office that you and I could sit down together and figure out a way so that we can go to these people? And if you're asking me what I can do to help and leverage it, I'm offering you right now, right now. So, you can't say that I'm not trying to do something. Tell me, when can you come to my office? Tomorrow morning's good enough for me, and we will, we will set up meetings, we will sit down and talk with them, and I will do everything in my power to try to, try to help the school board. When can you be there? Dr. Bowden?
I think we meet together.
No, but he's sitting there saying that...
I think we need to meet together. I don't, I don't think it's right for you and the superintendent to meet with the sheriff. We should be meeting together. I don't think anyone should be...
The superintendent made an accusation to me that I'm going around saying negative things, that I'm putting the wedge...
Pointing.
No, he finger pointed me. He made an accusation that's untrue, and so I'm putting, I'm saying, I'm proving that the accusation's not true.
That you and the sheriff coordinated an attack on me last week, knowing that I was out of the country. Yes or no?
No. The sheriff, when did the sheriff attack you?
There were a series of articles...
The sheriff attacked you?
Okay. I just want to make sure that you're on record, that you and the sheriff did not coordinate your actions, knowing that I was out of the country and could not respond. You're saying that did not happen?
That we coordinated our activities so that he could attack you? I don't even know what you're talking about.
So, you're saying that you and the sheriff did not coordinate that I was out of the country, and it would be a good time to go public because I was not going to be here?
That's ridiculous.
Okay, I believe...
We will release your text messages before the end of the week that contradicts your statement.
I would like to take a recess. I think we need to take a breath to move forward, so...
We've had people's comments waiting to talk. I think we ought to let them talk.
I'm done speaking.
Okay.
I'm done.
We need to stop and let the people who came here to talk, talk so they can go home.
I agree. So, no, I, no, fair point. I agree. If we can just move forward, is your superintendent's report completed, Dr. Bowden?
I am on there to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Zucker.
I would just like to make it very clear that one board member cannot go with the superintendent to a meeting to decide things. It's all five members. We work as a board, five people. The only one that has a slight advantage is the chair, that she can do, or she or he, whatever it happens to be, cannot make decisions for the board, but can relay information from the board to the community. But it has to be the board's as a whole thoughts, not just theirs alone. So, you cannot go with the superintendent to speak to these people.
And I agree, Mrs. Zucker, and I think perhaps is next steps, as we reference the upcoming workshop, in the event we feel like we need to have a joint meeting to find further solutions, perhaps that's what we'll do together. Dr. Bowden, is there anything, is your superintendent's report complete?
I think I referenced the packet that's in your possession. It's entitled "Communications with Sheriff Tom Knight." I just want to make sure that we're on record that the intent of this is just to document that there is an open line of communication between the sheriff and I, and nothing more was the intent of that packet, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Moving on to hearing of citizens, and I want to thank all of the, all of the citizens for your patience. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the timer, timer flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you need to begin to summarize. You must stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note that respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, you should listen politely and respectfully without making any sound or approval of disapproval. Should have read that before. Sue Maloney? Oh, you're fine. You could probably take a break for a minute anyway.
Good evening. My name is Sue Maloney. I'm here tonight to speak to you again about a program called Sandy Hook Promise. I'm also a member of the Sarasota chapter, the Brady Campaign, a nationwide organization that advocates for sensible gun control. Last year, the local Brady Campaign group became partners with Sandy Hook Promise. Both organizations have the same goal, to make our country and above all, our schools safe from gun violence. The Sandy Hook Promise Organization, formed by parents whose children were killed in a mass shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary School in 2012, offers its programs free of charge to any school or school district in America. The two programs most widely used are Start With Hello, which is a K-12 program, and Say Something, a program that encouraged students in grade six through 12 to tell authorities if they suspect that other students may be a threat to themselves or to others in the community or school. The last time I spoke to you was at a board meeting on February 20th. Ms. Sigler, I know you were in Tallahassee and missed that meeting. The Sandy Hook Promise District Office did submit an application to the Safe and Drug-Free Schools Advisory Committee, and they approved that at their meeting on March 12th. I have delivered folders of information on this program to Sonia Figueroa-Alberts and Suzanne DeBose in the People's Support Office. A little background, the Miami-Dade School District has been using this program since 2015. Pinellas and Hillsborough Counties will start using it next year. On March 7th, the Manatee County Superintendent, Dr. Diana Green, held a phone conference with Blair Friedman, who is the Florida State Rep for Sandy Hook Promise, and Dr. Green committed to using those programs next year in the Manatee County schools as well. I know that two high schools in Sarasota County are already interested in using these programs. Dr. Shelley, the principal of Booker High, told me that she had heard excellent reviews of the Sandy Hook programs while she was in Tallahassee at the emergency meeting. She wants to implement it next year at Booker. On March 3rd, Ms. Melanie Ritter, the assistant principal at Venice High, called me to request information on the program. She thinks it will mesh very well with the programs that they're already using. Dr. Bowden, I'd like to set up a time with your office staff when you would be free to hold a phone conference with Blair Friedman. As the staff member for Sandy Hook Promise, she can provide you and your staff with more information on the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have some written information that I would like to leave with the assistant for you.
Thank you again. Next up is Nick Guy.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As a resident of Sarasota, I'm also a husband and the father of two young girls, and my young, my oldest will be starting school next year. So, that's why I decided to get involved, find out more, and I've been focusing primarily on, you know, kindergarten, elementary school, but, you know, being here tonight, seeing all these wonderful, you know, higher-level students and the things they're doing, it gave me a lot of hope because I knew we were in a good school district, but this is pretty, pretty amazing. Obviously, safety is the biggest concern for boards, students, teachers, but parents. I mean, we are scared to death about what's going to happen, you know, getting that phone call, being, and I'm, you don't want to be in that position, the board, and I sure as heck know that the sheriff doesn't want to be, you know, in that position and after some of the things we've heard, be on the wrong side of an issue because law enforcement wasn't available. So, I urge you guys to put your, whatever differences you have aside and imagine being one of those parents. Imagine getting that phone call. Imagine having a neighbor, you don't have children. Whatever it is, please do what you can because my daughter starts school August 13th, and I'd like to maybe get some sleep the night before, so. That's all. I just want to introduce myself and express that concern. And I also want, one last thing, sorry. It was talked about, and not so much since then. I think Board Member Brown mentioned it, started to, focusing on things other than, than law enforcement, you know, there's a big, they want to call it mental health, but it's really, it's a trauma issue. You know, these kids have been through abuse, sexual, mental, physical, and that, that, you're developing as a human being, and that sticks with you. And bad things happen when that isn't addressed, treated. We can't just put law enforcement in schools. We can't just build tougher, bigger walls in schools. We've got to go to the root of the problem with kids, and some of those programs are talked about up here. They were talked about when they were presenting, and I barely heard about them, you know, since they left, as being a part of a solution, a conversation. So, please, please, please. Thank you. I appreciate the time and look forward to reading about this being in the paper tomorrow. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Louis Navarro? I'm not sure if I'm, but...
He wasn't born and raised here. Good evening, Superintendent, Board. I'm Lou Navarro from Lee County. So, I had a real eye-opening experience tonight. I was born and raised in Sarasota. I'm a retired teacher, graduated University of South Florida and Florida State University Grad School. I'm here to talk about Sarasota High School. I graduated here in 1962, spent all my years here in Sarasota till I left, and I wrote you about 10 years ago, which is a while back, about the trophies at Sarasota High. They had been apparently thrown out, and our old friend Eddie Howell, he's deceased now, he was the AP there, he had a new plaque made with the approval of the board, according to my knowledge, and what happened was we won state in conference in 1961 golf team, but they threw our trophies out. So, I'm here tonight because I went to Sarasota High to look for everything, and there was hardly anything there, plus I had to come back later because they were in session. I found the anchor that we donated in 1962. The plaque's missing on it, and I've left you pictures, and by the way, those are the medals we got individually, but we had two trophies to the school, Western Conference and state championship, and I've left you the FHSAA stuff too. But what I'd like to ask you is to get our plaque back on our anchor that said, donated by Class 62, and find our plaques and trophies. Why wouldn't you want to put them out? That's, why wouldn't you want to feel like that's a school anymore? I mean, you know, I realize it's 60 years ago, but, but I was really discouraged. So, I would hope you would look into this and see what we could do. I want to commend you for letting the students out on March 15th. Our board and superintendent took a harder line, and the students did not go out, so I want to say something nice here tonight too. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Nate?
Nolte.
Nolte? I'm sorry. Either need glasses or more coffee. Sorry.
I didn't want to stand up. It wasn't my turn. My name is Andrea Nolte. My daughter attends Riverview High School. She's a junior. On the days leading up to the national walkout on March 14th, I received several automated phone calls, listening to what the county was planning to do. Sat and listened. I had no problem with a vigil. I think that's a nice thing to do. I've been in several schools for different reasons. Teachers have lost students to drunk driving accidents, and the kids went out and said something nice, and it was very nice, so I didn't ask many questions. I should have. I went and found out that it was not the students who led this march. They did not. It was the Women's March. Some of the sponsors, they're called Empower, the group, the Trayvon Martin Foundation, the Coalition of Nasty Women, MoveOn.org, NAACP, Code Pink, Occupy Wall Street, Planned Parenthood. These were the people who helped organize the children so they could go to march. I went to their website. This is their mission statement. "We are walking out for all people who have experienced gun violence, including systematic forms of gun violence that disproportionately impact teens in black and brown communities. It is important that when we refer to gun violence, we do not overlook the impact of police brutality and militarized policing in our schools, and do not want more police in our schools as a solution. We also recognize that the United States has exported gun violence through imperialist foreign policy to destabilize other nations." Does that sound like a vigil? My, all these kids that walked out, they're asking for their videos, their pictures, they're using them as propaganda. Sarasota County is now attached to this. Our imperialistic ways that we hurt other countries? I'm all about protecting our children. I don't look at the police in schools as bad, but this group, it's on their site. Our kids are like, yay, we were there. Here's our pictures. That is very, very, very disheartening. I'm looking at something that says, "From Sarasota County, when dealing with political issues, the positions of all parties will be presented on a nonpartisan basis. Partisan political literature will not be distributed in schools." That's not the case. I'm holding right here a walkout flyer. That acting principal, Kathy Wilk, said she approved. It's a list of chants, "No Justice, No Peace," from the Black Lives Matter group. "When our lives are under attack, what do we do? Stand up and fight. Hey, 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 guns have got to go." That's not political. They also held a voter registration and took emails. They have the next little activist online. Any Republican kids out there? Probably not because they were afraid, and by the way, my daughter was bullied because she didn't go outside. You're going to let the next, next walkout happen on April 20th? That's the next one planned. You're going to let the kids walk out again? Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Nolte?